We have a prayer led by Rick Mahalovich, our second ward city councilman, and then please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Following the salute to America's celebration, I'd like to recognize the many sponsors, workers, and volunteers who contributed to another successful event. Let us be reminded, like the salute to America's celebration, the greatest challenges and rewards we most likely will have comes with cooperation of many groups. In this case, the state of Missouri, the Coe County, the Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Jefferson. So let us pray for the many sponsors, volunteers, workers, and groups that came together under a single purpose. And let us pray that when we are faced with great challenges, that we could come together as one entity to achieve a common goal. In that name, in his name, we pray.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome to City Hall. As you can see by some short-sleeved shirts and some different colors tonight, our heat index is 103. We will now have a roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
We have a quorum this evening. Next, we'll go to adoption of the agenda. Mr. Bray.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda to include resolution number 2014-13.
Has copies of that been distributed out for the public?
There's some.
Okay.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. If there's not a problem with that, I guess we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote on that, and we talked about it next door. Voice vote, please. All in favor of including resolution 2014-13 under resolutions number 15, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we'll move into election of ward to council members. We have two individuals that have spoken up for this job, Ms. Laura Ward and Carolyn McDowell. Drew, would you like to give the public a quick rundown of how this works this evening?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. After, I guess, this explanation, the council, actually, the mayor will call for the roll, and the councilman will announce the last name of the person for whom they're voting. And the person gaining the majority of votes will then be sworn in and seated immediately to take, and they'll continue to serve until April, in which the seat will be up for election again.
Okay, any questions by council members? Seeing none, roll call, please, starting with, it's a courtesy call here that we start with the second ward person in this case, or the remaining person in this case, Mr. Mahalovich. Please start roll.
Mahalovich.
Laura Ward.
Branch.
Ward.
Bray.
Ward.
Costalis.
McDowell.
Graham.
McDowell.
Henry.
Ward.
Hussey.
Ward.
Prather.
Ward.
Scrivner.
McDowell.
And it looks like Ms. Ward is our new second ward councilwoman. She's here tonight, I think I saw her earlier. Laura, if you could come up, please. Our city clerk will administer the oath. Carolyn, I appreciate you stepping up to the plate once again for our community. Thank you very much.
... to the office of the City Council of Jefferson, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri, the provisions of the laws of the State of Missouri, charter of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, and all authorities of the city will faithfully remain self in office.
We'll give Laura just a chance. We'll give Laura a chance to gather her belongings, and I'm assuming you guys have probably cleaned out that desk prior to now? Probably not?
I need to ask our city.
I think that might be, I think that might be.
That's our city prosecutor.
I think that's, I think that's Stumpy's.
Yeah, that's Stumpy's job.
Desk at times, so. Laura, behalf of the entire City Council, welcome. If you would, for the other people that may not know you, could you just tell us briefly a little bit about yourself and what made you decide to run?
Hi, I'm Laura Ward, and I'm married to Michael Ward. We've been married for 20 years. I have a son, Patrick, who is 18 and will attend MU in the fall, well, actually, next month. And Elizabeth, Ellis here, she will be a sophomore at Helius. We moved here for the Catholic schools from Columbia, Missouri, and we have restored two historic homes in Old Town. We love Jefferson City. I love the downtown and the downtown neighborhoods, and I would like to support all the efforts that are going on for improvement down in those areas.
All right, Laura, thank you very much, and once again, welcome. Let's see, moving down to number eight, we have a special guest with us tonight from our city staff, Mr. Matt Marash. He's here to tell us more about recent changes in sewer rates.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As council well knows, in July, which is the month we're in, our sanitary sewer rates will be adjusted. 5% increase will go into effect. Those were approved back by the council in 2010 during a bond issue. In addition, another change to the bill will be the annually, the usage, the usage rate is recalculated, and that's based on your January, February, and March bill, the average of the three, so low water months that people typically aren't watering things and washing cars and all that, so that's what your, your usage portion of the bill is based on. And so that's also adjusted. So depending on your usage, the 5% is obviously an increase, but you might even see a decrease. I heard from one person tonight that their bill actually went down, so that's most likely the reason. So there'll be a slight adjustment beside the 5% increase. And if you have any questions about your bill, once you get it, feel free to contact us here at City Hall at 634-6410, and you could ask for Barb Touche. She's over our billing, and/or Eric Seaman, who's our wastewater division director, would be happy to talk to you about your bill if you, help you understand it better.
Any questions of Matt? All right, Matt, thank you very much for that update. Mr. Scrivner.
Matt, this is not the first adjustment that's occurred. I mean, there have been periodic adjustments since the bond issue was approved.
That's correct, essentially annually, it's adjusted, and of course, the usage is adjusted too on that, that I had mentioned, but I think it tops out in 2017 on our current approval, if I'm right. Eric, Eric Seaman's here. Yeah, 2017, there's a built-in escalating scale to cover our bonding.
Okay.
Any questions of Matt?
One last question, is, does the usage show, it shows up on the bill, doesn't it? If it's adjusted, we could, we could look at our, at a previous bill and compare and see whether our usage went up or down? Or is that factor on the bill? Do you know?
Well, it's based on the water usage.
But I'm saying, is that factor rate on the bill?
I don't, I don't think it is. We get that information from various sources. Obviously, there's more than one water district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marash. So if someone sees an increase on their, on their bill for 15%, it's based on the past usage? Because the increase was supposed to be 5%. They see a 15%. You say it's based on the past usage, correct?
It's, it's based on two things. One, the usage, and one, the 5% incremental increase on the, on the volume.
So someone could see a 15% increase?
Yeah, most like, you could, it's potential.
Okay, thank you.
Outside the city, it's a little different too, then, right?
Right, I mean, the, the base rate is, depending on where you're at right now, it's three times the base rate, so, but the 5% also is there as well.
All right, any other questions? Matt, thank you for that update. Appreciate the staff providing that with us, for us this evening. Moving on to number 10, I'm sorry, Mark, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name. How do you pronounce your last name?
Jurz.
What's that?
Jurz.
Jurz, you're up next, Mr. Jurz. Moving on to number 10. For the record, please state your name and address, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have something to pass out to City Council.
Go right ahead, please.
I'll get that for you. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about one of the resolutions that's up for introduction tonight. It's number 2014-31. It's, it's the Basin 5 and 6 Sewer Interceptor Phase 1 project that was recently bid with the City of Jefferson City. My name is Mark Jurz. I'm the field engineer and product manager with Advanced Drainage Systems. We are a, the world's largest manufacturer of corrugated plastic products. We are based in Columbus, Ohio. We have regional members of our team, such as myself here in Missouri, as well as regional sales representatives, local distribution throughout the region, including several distributors in Columbia, Missouri that manage the area here. I'd like to start my remarks by saying that, you know, in the eight years plus that I've been with Advanced Drainage Systems, I never had to do this. I'm, I'm the product manager for our sanitary sewer product line. It's a kind of an unusual situation that is presented to us, so my apologies for, for maybe it being a little rough in the beginning. The summary that I have here is a few of my remarks. Most of you should have seen them late last week, prior to the holiday, as a precursor for some digestion prior to tonight. The, the introduction of the bill is recommending the alternate bid be the basis for award, which is a different product than the base bid. The base bid is Advanced Drainage Systems product called polypropylene. It is a major innovation in the advancement of sanitary sewer. It's a, it's a fairly new product to the Midwest, but it's been used in Europe for decades. The reason ADS introduced it to the United States was it's a very cost-effective product that offers a significant amount of not only savings, but long-term performance advantages. I don't have time to get into all of those here, but I wanted to highlight a couple of items. The base bid low bidder, JC Industries, bid $927,000 with our pipe. Currently, JCI is installing two projects here in Jefferson City with this pipe. Both of them are sanitary sewer projects. JCI also, last year, installed the same size pipe on a project at a treatment plant in Marshall, Missouri, just north of, just north of I-70. They also did a sewer project in Morberly, Missouri, just up I-63 from here. So in summary, the base bid was $537,000 underneath the second, the second low bid. The second low bid was, was $250,000 under the engineer's estimate. So in short, the two lowest bids were with polypropylene. They all were lower by $130-some thousand on average, but all of the bids were substantially lower with this polypropylene product. It was the base bid mainly because those, the city who approved the product as an equal on the project, the engineer who did the same, felt that it would probably be a less expensive option. Jefferson City has, has used this product on a number of stormwater applications here in the city. It's been widely used throughout the area. One significant point of reference is St. Louis MSD, the fourth-largest sewer district in the country, has fully approved this product for all applications, no restriction whatsoever. It is considered an equivalent in many, many places. I gave you three examples in your packet, Cincinnati, St. Louis, and then also the Army Corps of Engineers, which is the largest design government entity in the country. All three of them have given it equivalency to the baseline products. I summarize a lot of the advantages and performance enhancements that the product offers you in, in the document. Again, I don't have time to go through all them. If you wish to ask specific questions, you may. But in summary, there, there is a lot of use around the region. It provides a tremendous amount of savings, not only on this project, but you have far more sewer work coming up. This project alone can save you over a half a million dollars. You have other projects coming up that the taxpayers and the increases in your sewer rates that you're seeing can be tempered by using this product. It has been proven, tested, and most definitely will provide you a long-term solution to your future sanitary sewer needs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Good job, by the way. Appreciate you coming tonight. I think Matt will be making a presentation later tonight on that bill. If it's okay with the council, we'll adjust, adjust, or we'll introduce questions of staff at that point in time. All right, thank you again for coming tonight, I appreciate it. Next, we have the consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
Moved by Henry and seconded by Lynn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll move on to bills introduced. We'll have first reading of bill 2014-27.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated for the Clay Street Bike Plaza Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As clerk indicated, this is our Clay Street Bike Plaza project, construction contract. The contracts with Sam Gaines, they were the low bidder. The, as you may recall, that this project will replace the area where the yellow bollards are before you enter the Pet Bridge over the Missouri River. City was successful in getting a grant to do this project a couple of years ago. Basically, it'll increase the parking area there available, make it handicap accessible, and then also create a kind of a nicer plaza area with some benches, a drinking water fountain, those kind of things, and kind of put a nicer front to people visiting the city when they come across the bridge, kind of orientate them to where they're at. The total cost is just over $149,000. The city's share comes from sales tax, which is actually $31,802, and the remainder comes from the grant and CDBG funds. You have to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 27? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 28, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an actual cost utility agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Matt?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We have actually five bills on the agenda tonight that relate to the Lafayette interchange. This is the first one of those, but there'll be more to come next meeting as well. So a lot of, a lot of things going on in relationship to the interchange. This one is with a, is a utility agreement, basically with MoDOT, where they've agreed to construct certain sanitary sewers to move them around out of the way of the interchange. And then, in addition, we had already designed some of those, so they're agreeing to pay our design fees. Bartland West was our engineer on those. Basically, the engineering portion, they're agreeing to pay us is around $87,314, and I think the whole, the whole tab, if you were to look at the estimates in, in the packet, there's almost a million dollars' worth of sewer work that has to be relocated around the interchange time you count design and the actual construction estimate. Now, they will include that work, the majority of that work, in their actual bidding of the project, just so they can coordinate it better with their construction.
Any questions of Matt on number 28? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to first reading of 29, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of right-of-way on an unnamed alley in the 600 block of Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is also related somewhat to the interchange, really. Basically, Lincoln University has requested that the city vacate an unnamed alley next to their daycare center just off Marshall Street, just north of Dunkland. It's kind of in a, part of a deal where the barber shop, to be relocated for the interchange construction, would go in this area, or they're getting a parcel from Lincoln for that, and so this is kind of part of that deal. So the city's portion is to, excuse me, vacate the alley next to it. It's an improved alley. It basically functions more or less as the daycare's driveway right now.
Okay, any questions for Matt on 2014-29? All right, seeing none, we'll move into first reading of 2014-30, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to, to transfer property owned by the City of Jefferson to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in conjunction with the Lafayette Street Interchange Project.
Mr. Scrivner.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules for 2014-30 and take that bill up tonight.
The rules will be suspended unless two or more council members want to suspend the rules. Anyone to my left? Timmerite? Seeing none, the rules will officially be suspended. We'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to transfer property owned by the City of Jefferson to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in conjunction with the Lafayette Street Interchange Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this will transfer a remnant piece of right-of-way that the city now owns to MoDOT for the Lafayette interchange construction. Basically, that, most likely, that parcel was acquired, you know, when the greenway came through. MoDOT, obviously, we're working closely with MoDOT and would agree to transfer that property to them for the interchange. The, the reason for suspension of the rules is, MoDOT requested we take this up under one meeting so that they can proceed with their property acquisition schedules. Actually, I believe by Friday, any property that is obtained, the names will go on a list, and they go into the condemnation proceeding, just to keep the project on schedule. Of course, they're still negotiating with property owners through, through this project. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Matt on 2014-30? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Motion passes. Good job on the button. It took these guys forever to figure that out. Okay, next, first reading of 2014-31, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with JC Industries Incorporated for the Basin 5 and 6 upgrades Phase 1 project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As clerk indicated, this is Bill 31, also related to the Lafayette interchange. The city has wanted to fix this line for quite some time, but because of the interchange work, we actually relocated it slightly out of the way of some of their peers and things of that nature. But anyway, this is a construction contract for that project. So we're recommending JCI as the low bid. The, basically, the project would be to reconstruct the sanitary sewer from McCarty Street over to Lafayette, kind of behind the little community center and come, and where the trail crosses Lafayette. That's the, that's the terminus for this phase of the project. The, we did have somebody tonight comment, the pipe salesman, commented tonight about, about saving $500,000. I think that's a, I actually gave you a short, very short memo on the subject, and I had talked to him about this, that that is really not the case, that the, the low bid was submitted in error, and we had talked, when we see a bid like that, we, it was quite a bit lower than all the others. Our city engineer contacts the contractor to see if they can honor that bid, and they found, and we found that they can't. JCI is obviously a local contractor, does a lot of work with us, and so we, we talked with them about their, their next bid, with the alternate they could honor. That, that bid is basically only $22,000 difference than the next low bid. So the difference is, on this bid, we would take the PVC pipe alternate, which is actually our preferred pipe. The ADS pipe that he mentioned is, is actually cost savings. It would save, save some money if you utilize that pipe typically, but in this case, it's almost identical in cost to the, to the other bid. So city staff is recommending JCI. They are installing a certain section of this sewer already on our Lafayette and Dunkland intersection project. Trying to hit the highlights of my, my memo for you. But also, and I know Ms. Ward didn't have a copy of the memo, but I can get that to her after the meeting. He had had several other, quite a bit of information about the pipe types, all of which, you know, the city does specify this type pipe on a regular basis. Not that they were against his product or anything of that nature. We always look at cost savings and try to do the best, what's in the best interest of the city, of course. Be happy to answer any questions and as we go forward.
All right, we won't be voting on this this evening, but any questions to my left? Timmerite? Bob?
I would appreciate it, Mr. Marash, if you could maybe turn to the bid tabulation and show us the numbers that you're referring to.
Yeah, you all have a bid tabulation in your packet, and of course, there's the engineers, and if you were to look at that, there's an engineer's estimate is in the first column. And the, and so on this particular project, there was a base bid, and that included the pipe we were talking about. So we get, and we have these, we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, five bidders on this project. JCI, the first number you see at the bottom is a little over $900,000, much lower than any of the other bidders, if you'll note. The next bid's 1.4 million. So when we see something like that, and then we also compare it to the engineer's estimate, which is 1.7 million. So when we see a number like that, that's kind of out of, out of whack with everyone else's bid and the engineer's estimate, we question that. You know, our goal here is not to be heavy-handed with our contractors. If they made an error or something of that, we always call them, see if they will honor that bid. In most cases, you know, they say, no, we don't have it, we don't have an error in our bid, and we will honor that. We've had that experience a lot at the city in my, my tenure here. In this case, JCI said, no, we definitely made a mistake, we can't honor that bid. And so typically, we, you know, we kick that out. But we had an alternate here, and we said, well, what about your alternate? Is that a good bid? And so you look down below the $900,000 number, and you come to the 1 million, I don't have my, got a, got a small copy here in my hand, just a little over 1.4 million, or, excuse me, 1,464,000. So that's the, that's the number we're recommending, and it's for a PVC pipe, which we feel is a very good pipe, and in fact, our preferred pipe alternative in this case. And so really, if you really wanted to compare it to something, you'd have to look at the next low bid, which is Sam Gaines', which is 1,442,000. So about $22,000 difference is all, but for different pipe types. So that, that's really the numbers you're looking at. I'm trying to explain that out loud, it's a little difficult, you know, a lot of numbers on this sheet, obviously, but.
So just so I, I am sure that I'm following you correctly, Gaines would have added 791,000 for the alternate PVC pipe, which would have taken their bid to 2,234,000. Is that correct?
Well, that's, that's what's, again, it's on this sheet, however, when I look at that number, I can see there's prob, most likely, we didn't go contact him about that, but most likely, there's an error there, because you look at the rest of the bids, they, there was either some confusion, or there, those, those two bids both had some irregularity with them, so we would question that that's even a good bid there with Mr. Gaines. So if we were to choose the next PVC pipe type, it's obviously Sterling's is 1.5 million, so that's most likely the bid you would take, to go another $100,000. We felt it was in the best interest of the city and fair to all the bidders that we go with the JCI bid for the PVC pipe, and.
So when you're saying that the PVC represents a $22 million, or, excuse me, $22,000 higher cost than the next bid, you're comparing the 1.48, or 1.464 to the 1.442. Gaines's base bid's 1.442, and the bid using PVC pipe by JC Industries is 1.464?
Right. What I'm trying to say is, if you kicked out the JCI bid just because there was a math error in the first bid, so the city was saying, okay, it had a math error, and let's just kick it out, you'd really be talking about, okay, forget the rest of the bids, look at the, look at the rest of them. It would be Sam Gaines's base bid for the ADS pipe, which is the gentleman's talking about here. So that's really what you're comparing, you know, and my, I think you're getting down to, do you kick out that bid because it had an error? We don't think it's a good idea. It wasn't an error, we didn't change any numbers to arrive at this PVC bid. It's a good bid, and we think it's a good product, so we, we would recommend that.
I just want to make sure that I understood, and, and that all of us had a chance to look at the numbers while you were explaining them.
Yeah, and.
Make sure that we all.
What I can do between now and next meeting, I will have, our engineer on this project was Bartland West, and Bob Gilbert's obviously a managing partner there, and I met with him this morning, and he said he could write a short, short memo about this to the council if need be, between now and next meeting, and I'd be glad to have him do that.
Okay.
One of his representatives is here, but, but Bob would prefer to address it himself.
Not giving him a lot of homework, but if he could maybe address the issue comparing the two pipes and the expected.
Certainly, yeah. He could give us a short synopsis of it.
Yeah, a little synopsis of that.
Yeah. And he is our independent engineer, not the salesman for either type of pipe.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Bob?
No.
Anybody else? All right, moving on to 2014-32. First reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning .14 acres from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RA2 High Density Residential for land addressed as 911 St. Mary's Boulevard, described as Lot 5, Block 2, Washington Park Edition in Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This lot on St. Mary's Boulevard contains about 6,500 square feet. It's currently a vacant lot. Mr. Reese, if you could advance the slide? Thank you. Shows the location here on St. Mary's Boulevard near Michigan Street. There was a house previously on this property that was demolished, and the owner wishes to construct a single-family house. Currently, the property's zoned C1 Neighborhood Commercial, which doesn't support that use. So, by rezoning to RA2 High Density Residential, which is the adjacent zoning district, would allow him to construct a single-family home on that property, and it also conforms with our comprehensive plan. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application at their meeting in June and recommended that it be approved. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. McMillan on number 32? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Janice. Moving on, first reading of 2014-33, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending sections of Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to daycare homes, drive-through restaurants, funeral homes, funeral arrangement services offices, crematoriums, and mortuaries.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Periodically, staff identifies some zoning amendments that we'd like to bring forward. This helps us keep our zoning ordinance up to date, and this is the purpose of this particular amendment. There are several things that are identified that we'd like to address in this amendment, first of being daycare homes. Currently, we allow daycare homes in residential zoning districts with just permitted use for those daycare homes up to seven children. They do have to be licensed by the state of Missouri, of course, and they get an inspection from the state, as well as our Environmental Health Division for food service operations. But the daycare homes for more than seven children, seven to 10, require a conditional use permit. In the past, we've entertained various applications for daycare homes in residential districts, and the demand for those has declined somewhat over the years. And also, we have multiple standards that are in the code already that pretty much guarantees that the use is going to fit in with the neighbors. So, what we would like to do is propose that the conditional use be eliminated for the daycare homes of seven to 10 children, allow those with permissive uses, still would require that the, they require an annual inspection from the state of Missouri, comply with all the licensing requirements. We also want to eliminate the duplication between the city's ordinance and the state requirements. They still have to comply with the outdoor and indoor play area requirements, but we want to strike that from our local ordinance and just go with the state's requirements. Next item in our land use matrix, currently, the drive-through uses, especially on food services, has vacillated over the years between the zoning districts. In the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, drive-through uses are currently allowed. It's been discussed that we would like to remove the drive-through food uses from the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District so that those become more pedestrian-oriented and try to direct the more vehicle-oriented uses to the C2 Neighborhood, or C2 General Commercial District where possible. The next item is updating the language pertaining to mortuary and funeral uses. This is one area of the code that was morbidly out of date, and so, we would like to update that language to include Funeral Arrangement Service Offices, crematoriums, and other uses. A definition for funeral home, which was not currently included in our ordinance. There's some information included that was provided to you on some of those uses, so I'd refer you to that. And then, the last section that's being updated, two more sections, one section on crematoriums and specific use standards for those, and updating the definitions. So, all of those amendments went to the Planning and Zoning Commission and received a favorable review, and so, we're passing those along to you. Public hearing on those items would be scheduled for the next meeting on the 21st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Janice? To my left, to my right. Bob?
I don't expect you to know every zoning code in Jefferson City, but along West Maine, I know they're in the process of building, or remodeling, I guess, better word, a building there, and there is a drive-through window, and I think that's a C2 commercial zoning. Would that have kept that drive-through? Will this change, have kept that drive-through from being in there?
If it's a pickup window, it would probably be allowed. If they have an order box, an outdoor order box and all of that, then that's what would be restricted.
So, the heavier traffic is what you're trying to avoid?
Correct.
Not just a pickup window of some sort?
Right.
Okay. And this specifically refers to drive-through dining, but if there was some other business, and I think of at one time, the cleaners used to have drive-through, but that's more of a pickup window than a drive-through window, I suppose?
Yes, yes. We would classify that as a pickup window.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, moving on, first reading of 2014-34, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing the name of Frog Hollow Road in the 2600 block to Tree Valley Lane.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. This item comes before the council as a result of street improvements that are currently in progress at Frog Hollow Road and West Edgewood. The street is going to be terminated at Ware's Creek. The bridge will not be replaced during this improvement project, and instead, Creek Trail Drive will be extended to meet up with Frog Hollow Road in the vicinity of 179 and La Carr Drive. Of course, 179 goes over that area, there's no intersection there. But that's the vicinity in which Frog Hollow Road and Creek Trail Drive would be connected. We notified the property owners on the 2600 block of Frog Hollow Road that staff proposed to change the street name to eliminate confusion so that we wouldn't have two street segments with the same name, especially since the 2600 block is going to be terminated there at the creek. So, we notified the property owners and invited them to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in June. Staff had proposed the name of Fane Wood Lane, which the neighbors in Fane Wood subdivision didn't, did not agree to. They preferred something that was more of a natural-sounding name. So, the name that was come up with was Tree Valley Lane, and so, that's the name that's being proposed, and the green line on the map shows the extent of this street that would be renamed. And so, we've notified all of the property owners with addresses on, in the 2600 block of Frog Hollow Road, and also notified the residents in Fane Wood subdivision, so they've all had an opportunity to be aware of the proposed change. And we did receive some comments, and those were included in your packet. Again, a public, the public hearing on this street name change is scheduled for the next council meeting, which is at 6:00 PM on July 21st.
Any questions for Ms. McMillan on 34? Mr. Bray.
Ms. McMillan, I forwarded the name Tree Canopy, a name that was given to me by a resident there. Did that get considered, or did I get that in too late? Perhaps I got it in too late. Do you recall of Tree Canopy Lane?
I don't, no, I don't recall that.
Okay.
It was not?
Ms. Ward, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry if you already said this, but how many property owners would be affected by a name change or an address change?
I think there are actually just three or four that have their addresses on Frog Hollow Road. All of the others, you know, they access their properties via this stretch of Frog Hollow Road. But there will only be three or four whose addresses are actually affected.
And you've met with them?
Yes, they've all been notified. And in fact, when we change the name of a street, they can use the name of that street for up to a year. And typically, the Department of Public Works will post a sign. Both signs will remain in place for a year, and the post office recognizes both of the street names for about a year. So, we'll assess the property owners that actually have to change their addresses, we'll assess them with that process and make it as painless as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Graham? Anyone else on 34? All right, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2014-35, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the state of Missouri for parking.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a revised parking lease for the Hotel Governor Office Building. Previously, the lease had, the city had given a lease for 150 spaces for that building when it was being developed. 100 of those were for the building itself, the employees of that building, and then the additional 50 were for conferees that were attending conferences there or something of that nature. Since then, it's been kind of a problem to administer the conferee spaces, and so, we've approached the Office of Administration about changing this lease, and it ended up that the 50 spaces have been deleted from the lease. Those folks would now just enter and park on a daily basis like everyone else that visits downtown, pay the fee there, and then the 100, then there's still 100 spaces in the lease. So, we reduced the number of lease spaces to 100 from 150. Also, we increased the amount per space by $5 a month, and so, the net gain would be, to the parking fund, $24,000 a year would be the cost of that lease now. And that's for a five-year lease, and then another succeeding term, we have an escalation of 5% in there. Happy to answer any questions, and I know Drew was instrumental in getting this deal done for us.
Drew, appreciate you getting it to this point in time. Any questions by the council staff on 35? All right, moving on, we have first reading of 2014-36.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County for the Lafayette Enhancement Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This is the fifth bill dealing with the Lafayette interchange, but it's actually an agreement with Cole County. I think, as you all recall, one of the commissioners came and gave the council a presentation about some enhancements that would go on with the interchange that they had entered into a contract with MoDOT with. Subsequently, this would enter into a contract with Cole County that we would pay 1/3 of those costs, up to $500,000. In addition, the agreement also discusses our contributions towards MSP and our remediation of buildings getting recognized, as that being part of the city's MSP commitment. So, kind of catches that agreement up to date, if you will. I know Drew's been involved in this quite heavily as well, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on number 36? Seeing none, we have first reading of 37, please.
An ordinance approving the Capitol Mall Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan as a redevelopment project and adopting tax increment financing therein.
Mr. Hiltford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the final action the council will have to take to activate the TIF at the Capitol Mall. I know that we've seen many, many bills on this over the past few months. Nothing has changed since last time the council saw it. Essentially, what happened is that during the time that we were negotiating and passing bills and such, we just ran out of the statutory time. You have to, the council has to pass within 90 days of the TIF commission. So, since the last time, we just had to run it back through the TIF commission, they approved unanimously. It's back before this, and as soon as the council passes this, if they do, it'll be activated, and I think the developers have indicated they'll, they plan to start construction very shortly after the council acts.
Any questions of staff on 37? Bob?
There hasn't been a request, so I assume there's no need to suspend the rules on this?
Staff doesn't, with the developers, how interested you are.
But staff doesn't have a request?
Staff doesn't take a position. I'm sure the developers are ready to go whenever you all would like to. If the council feels comfortable, I certainly don't have any opposition to it. Nothing's changed.
I tell you, we've talked about this so many times, I don't see that there's going to be any changes to it. I'll just make a motion to suspend it. If there's no objection, we might as well...
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules on 2014-37, dealing with the TIF ordinance at Capitol Mall. Are there two or more that would not like to suspend the rules?
I would not like to at this time, since I'm new.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, at this point in time, the rules would be suspended, and we'll have third reading of 2014-37.
An ordinance approving the Capitol Mall Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan as a redevelopment project and adopting tax increment financing therein.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Abstain.
Branch.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into bills pending, we'll have third reading of 2014-25.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to a portion of industrial drive.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this bill would create an additional no parking area along an industrial drive. It's basically across the frontage from US Rinsit. The railroad actually owns that right-of-way there, with the city has an easement to put the road on. They had actually leased spaces in the past, and now have canceled some of those leases and are enforcing a no parking area along there. So, really, the signs are more of a notification for people not to get caught up and be ticketed by the railroad. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay. Any questions on 25, the staff?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Graham.
Who was actually giving out tickets, or were there ever tickets ever given out?
I understand there were some tickets given out, but the railroad actually has a police authority. I'm not sure of all the law about it, I don't know if Drew knows anything about it, but they actually have some, I guess, statewide authority to monitor the tracks. They have the railroad police, if you will, and they will even monitor the crossing gates that come down, that if they were to see somebody going past those, there's quite a hefty fine for that they can give out. And maybe even the police know something about it, if you have any more information. But they do have their own police force.
Any other questions, Mr. Graham? Do you want to get a ticket by the railroad, as we're trying to say? That's right. Any other questions to my right? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have third reading of 2014-26.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to a portion of Cherry Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This, again, is a no parking ordinance. We had a request from someone in the area along Cherry Street, which is a 22 and 1/2 foot wide road... foot wide roadway, to have no parking on one side of the street where there currently is parking, around some of the driveways and areas there. It's just north of Dunkla Street, that portion of Cherry, next to some Lincoln University property, actually, and housing authority. Basically, the effect would be to delete two parking spaces along the east side of Cherry. This request, we notified the property owners in the area, and it went through the Transportation and Traffic Commission for comment, and they recommended approval.
Any questions of staff on 26? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nothing on the informal calendar tonight. Next, we'll move into resolutions. A quick explanation of resolution 2014-13, please.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson with regard to Old Town Revitalization Company's appeal to the Cole County Board of Equalization for exemption from local property taxes.
Mr. Bray?
Ron Medine is in the chambers tonight and the audience. I would like to maybe yield the floor to Ron Medine to talk about the resolution.
Ron, it's been a while since we've heard your radio voice in these chambers.
Thank you. I'd have come up earlier, but that five-minute limitation scared me.
[laughing]
I think the, the council has seen some of the materials, but essentially, Old Town Revitalization Company is a creature of, of the, of the city council. It was created, I believe, in 2011, maybe a little earlier than that, at the instance and at the direction of the city council. It is essentially the organization that is the promoter of the city programs to revitalize Old Town. Those include incentives to have single-family houses in Old Town, the Old Town area. I apologize to Mr. Scrivner and Mayor Strump, who've heard this speech too many times, but, but essentially, the, the property values in the Old Town area are about $50,000, whereas the rest of Jefferson City is twice that amount. The rental rate in Old Town is something like 75%, as opposed to probably a third of that in the rest of, of Cole County and Jefferson City. The idea is that we provide a lot of services to Old Town in terms of police enforcement, city codes, fire protection, but one of the best things we can do, one of the best investments we can make, is for single-family residences to take root there. And that process has been somewhat effective. We've probably conservatively promoted or incentivized people to come into Old Town. There's probably been $2, $3 million worth of investment over the last five years, and all of that is a prelude to tell you that as part of this, all this process, occasionally we step in and acquire property, or property is donated to Old Town Revitalization Company, whereas people might not be so willing for the city of Jefferson to have the donation, or the city of Jefferson might not be so willing to take the donation. And the idea is that these properties will be turned around, revitalized, or in some instances, be demolished if they are in, in particularly bad shape. What's happened is, we took a property a couple of years ago, just about two blocks east of here on, on East McCarty, and it was a property that was abandoned, and it was determined that it should be torn down, and through HUD money and the help of Jamie Abbott and Janice McMillan, the property has been torn down finally, and it's now been ceded, and that's open space. But in the interim, while we are waiting for the process to, to go through HUD, we got a tax bill. And we got a tax bill from Cole County Assessor's office, who conservatively determined that we must, we must need to pay property taxes like everyone else, the complication being that our money comes from you. So, so essentially, we were paying city money to the county assessor so he could divide it up among all the other political subdivisions, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense. We've appealed that to the county assessor. Again, as a good conservative public official, he said, well, let's deny this application, and we'll take it to the Board of Equalization. Our hearing is in a week and a half, and on Friday morning, it occurred to me, it might be good if the city council weighed in on this and, and reaffirmed what's been a, a commitment since 19, or rather, 2007, to, to the Old Town Revitalization, and specifically to the Old Town Revitalization Company, which kind of acts as your cheerleader for your programs, as well as holds some property from time to time. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, but, or Mr. Scrivener or Mayor Strump can answer them, they've, they've heard it all before.
It almost looks like your penmanship on this resolution, to be honest with you, Ron.
Well, what are you doing, the Fourth of July?
Any questions for Ralph, or for any other staff member, or former councilman Medine? Bob?
Really don't have a question. I just want to reiterate that virtually all the money, both the money you acquire the property with, and the money that you demolish property, and if there's any fixing up done, anything that you would do to fix up, comes through, from the government, either through HUD or through City of Jefferson, and the company is staffed entirely by volunteers.
That's right. Last year, I, I would add, in the interest of full disclosure, with the tough budget you had, we did try to seek some donations from local banks to, to help us and, and lighten up the budget a little bit, but that's, that's essentially correct.
But even at that, it's donated money.
It's donated money, yeah.
Any other questions of our staff or our guests? Ron, thanks for being here tonight. Any debate by council on 2014-13? Yes, Glenn?
Yes, I have a couple of major reservations with this.
Oh, Glenn, hold on a second. I need a motion to accept, please, 2014-13. Clerk, just remind me. It's moved and seconded by Rick and Bray.
Go ahead, Glenn. Thanks, sir.
Okay, as I was saying, I have a couple of major reservations with this. One is, a few months back, a group of individuals came before this group and asked for a resolution to go to the legislature and ask them to stop smoking in the Capitol, and this body was divided on supporting or not supporting it because they didn't want to tell another governing entity what to do. I can't support this because we should not be telling the county what they should do. Bigger on my part is tax abatements. I don't want to give a tax abatement and turn around it during the budget process that we're getting ready to go into and be saying, we can't fund item A, we can't fund item B, because we don't have the money, right after we give a tax abatement. Thank you.
Bob, this is debate.
I, I can understand your concerns, but I'm, I guess I'm, I'm thinking that maybe there's some confusion still on this issue. Most of this property that's being acquired, in fact, maybe Mr. Medine could come back and, and reaffirm this, but I think most of it is property that, as he said, was abandoned, no taxes were being collected on it to begin with. The hope is that as it's acquired by Old Town and then put into hand of private owners, that taxes will be restored to that property. They act strictly as a holding company during the time that the property can be, ownership of the property can be transferred from a owner that is not paying taxes, with no monies being collected, to an owner that is going to be paying taxes. And the, the other issue is that as, as we, it's not uncommon for entities that are spending tax revenues not to pay taxes to other taxing jurisdictions, and I think that this resolution doesn't tell, or doesn't suggest, doesn't even suggest to the assessor that we think, or that we're trying to tell him what to do. I think this resolution's intended to affirm that, how this organization functions and the purpose of the organization. I think it's more of an affirmation of its purpose than it is a command to the, to the assessor as to what his business should be. And I think the assessor is, is going through a process of, of seeking guidance from the Tax Commission, or the, is it the Tax Commission?
Board of Equalization.
Board of Equalization. And, and I think that they, it might be important for them to know, as they may not be totally familiar with Old Town, it might be important for them to know how the relationship between the city and that organization, and, and again, I think this resolution, resolution just lays that out and affirms that, that relationship.
If I may respond?
Are you responding, or is this debate?
I'd like to respond.
Is it debate, sir?
It could be a debate.
Okay, go ahead.
Reading from the resolution, whereas it is in the best interest of the city of Jefferson that Old Town Revitalization Company be exempt from local property taxes, I think we're telling them what we want them to do, and that's not our job to tell the county what they should do.
Okay. Any other debate on this? Mr. Bray?
In response, I'll point out that the appeal process is, is simply part of the process, and Old Town is acting on, on our behalf, in our best interest, and it's in our, so it's in our best interest to offer Old Town whatever assistance we can as they go through this process, which is available to anyone that wishes to appeal.
Mr. Bray?
So this is a not-for-profit organization, correct? Old Town?
I would assume it's not for, or non-for, not with a T?
Yeah, okay. Point well made.
Ms. Ward?
I'd like to thank Old Town for all their work and volunteer. I think, too, we need to look at the bigger picture in this. Property taxes will increase when these vacant properties are put in the hands of those who want to restore them. I have been a witness to that. Mine have quite substantially increased since the restoration of our abandoned home that we took possession of in 2011, so that only benefits the city in the long run. We have to look broader than right now.
Thank you. Any other debate on 2014-13? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to number 16, no one signed up there. Council staff discussion of presentation topics. All right, moving on, any new business this evening? Any unfinished or old business? All right, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve a closed session minutes of June 16th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Oh, she caught me again, that this clerk is just on the money tonight. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Next, according to our, with the revised statutes of Missouri in mind, legal actions, contract negotiations, and real estate, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Branch, seconded by Mahalovich. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Next, according to our, with the revised statutes of Missouri in mind, legal actions,